... staff to prevent, educate about, and enforce rules prohibiting illegal fireworks. I'm appreciative of the extensive effort that has been made to help people make their homes less susceptible to fires in general. I fully understand that illegal fireworks are the largest danger and are an enforcement challenge. However, I believe all fireworks present a danger to our community under the current conditions which are extraordinary for us. This is not a usual year. I think it's important that we ask our community to make a sacrifice for safety, to forego the fun of fireworks during this very hot and dry time. Other cities have already done so. Yesterday, I received a call from a friend up on Lawrence and 23rd, a call made while they watched a fire in the house next door. A call to ask for a ban on fireworks this year. I told them I'd already asked you to consider that. Thank you for your consideration today. We've heard from a lot of folks with this request. So this is how I intend to run the meeting today. We're going to do a public hearing first, and then council can ask questions for clarification, any additional comments from staff, and then a round robin to hear which options. And you have those options in front of you that staff has put together, the cool fireworks ban, the partial ban, or no action. So those are the options in front of you here. And then after we do, we'll take no motions until we go through the round robin, and then take motions, and then any comments the manager wants to make. So let's start out with the public hearing. That would be...
Mayor, this is Alan. I joined the call.
Thank you. I'm glad to have you here. Those wishing to speak during the public hearing must submit a completed request to speak form to the information desk prior to the beginning of the public hearing. When you come to the podium, which is that, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene, residence, your ward if known. You will have three minutes to comment. There are lights on the timer. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. So we have seven people signed up to speak, and the first one is Aaron Taylor, followed by Ruth Demler.
I'm Aaron Taylor, and I'm a pastor here in town. Most of you know that. We have a church in South Eugene as well as one in Springfield. We do the, our main fundraiser for the year is fireworks, has been for 25 years, and many of you have bought at our locations. That being said, this is, could be very devastating to us. At the same time, none of us want a fire. So we've tried to look at this positively, and understanding Portland today, as I'm sure you know, decided not to ban fireworks, and most of the cities have decided not to ban fireworks. And so what I would like to do is at least give you some options. I've talked to the three wholesalers that are in this city, and all three, well, two of the three, one of them wouldn't actually, they only have one location in it. They don't sell ground blooms, for example. But what we're willing to do is to print safety brochures, which we have here, that are very specific to the high danger, do extra watering, explains it all really well, and I'd have, you know, be willing to make changes. And we could have these out, and they could be being distributed on every single sale in all the sales locations in Eugene, both in-store and out. And all the wholesalers are willing to do that effective immediately if we don't put a ban in. I mean, not that we wouldn't do it anyway, but if you put a ban in, this is all going to get really crazy for us and financially devastating. So, and not just, you know, not just us and Thurston Ban who's a part of it, and, you know, different missions trips and for youth and young people in camps. But, you know, there's Churchill High School, and their sports program is trying to raise money right across from us. There's other youth and high schools, and it's a pretty big deal. There's veterans organizations running stands this year. So that's a pretty big deal, and for us, it's, it would be devastating. I know that didn't hold a lot of weight last year, but this would be the end-all. So I hope we take that into consideration, remembering these are safe and sane fireworks. It's a 12-foot area that we're trying to make sure that there's no debris, and if people are educated well at all, they could do that. Second thing we, in discussion with the wholesalers that we said we could do and could do relatively quickly, is we could pull all ground blooms. Our city allows everything that the state allows, and so that's where we're at. Some cities, especially up in Washington, will say, okay, we'll allow safe and sane with the exception of ground blooms. And so we could pull our ground blooms. We don't, we don't want to. I don't think they're inherently dangerous, but they have the potential, if they are not lit on, on a solid surface, to go further. And we would pull those immediately.
Thank you. Ruth Demler is up next, followed by Link Smith.
Ruth Demler, 1745 for Crest, Eugene. I'm here, I live on the edge of Hendrix Park in Laurel Hill Valley. And I guess, living in Laurel Hill Valley, we have a different feeling or different regulations because I've had vegetation management to my house, I've had the fire department. All of them shake their head and think I'm in a serious situation, but there's nothing that seems to happen. And this has been going on for quite a few years. Next door to me, I have eight to 10 large dead trees lying flat on the ground, covered with now, much to my dismay and the dismay of the deer that look, used to sleep there, about 10 feet high of brush. And this happens throughout Laurel Hill Valley. They have brush in many locations, and nothing seems to be done about it. And after this tragic fire that we just experienced at Civic, I think it's made us all aware that a fire can happen so quickly, and the community can be in danger. Fortunately, we had an excellent response from the fire department, and we didn't see the tragedy that could have happened to our community. But other communities certainly have seen it. And with this drought, we need to be concerned, and I think the brush needs to be eliminated. And there so far has not been any call for removal of brush, and it grows each year higher and higher with more dead trees. And right next door to you, it's, it's a scary proposition. So I hope something can be done, and I hope that fireworks this year because of the drought danger can be banned. Thank you.
Link Smith is next, followed by, it looks like Chris Cheen.
Good morning. Appreciate being able to speak here this morning. First thing I'd like to say is thank you to the council for your recognition of the fire danger out there. I am the district forester, again, my name is Link Smith. I'm the district forester for the Western Lane District of the Oregon Department of Forestry out of Veneta. Here with several other counterparts, my counterpart Greg Wagonblast from the South Cascade District is here as well, and you'll also see some representatives from the Forest Service here. And again, I want to thank you for your recognition of the drought conditions and the fire danger we're in. The reality is, we are several weeks ahead of what we would call normal, not only in this district, but in the state as a whole. Currently, we have one fire team out on assignment right now, one of our three fire teams that the Department of Forestry has under its, under its wings. Again, we, we, what am I trying to say here? We called fire season probably two to three weeks earlier than we normally would. Our fire indices are in high fire danger right now. We're on the verge of going into extreme fire danger. So again, I appreciate your recognition of that. However, I have some real concern about an outright ban of fireworks in the city of Eugene, especially at this point. My fear is that, you know, a lot of people have already ramped up, they've made their purchases, they've made their plans, they're going to discharge their fireworks no matter what. And a outright ban in the city of Eugene, I believe will, and we believe will send a lot of those people out into the forest lands to an even more grave situation than what you may face here locally. Fortunately, in the valley, we've got lack of terrain overall, flatter. We've got phenomenal fire departments, whether it be City of Eugene, you know, the entire fire agency here in Lane County is pretty substantial. You saw some witness of that just recently. You've got natural fuel breaks using the roads. You've got neighbors with cell phones, you've got neighbors with water hoses, you've got ways to make it more safe than if we send this general public out into the forest lands right now. We do have a regulated use closure in effect for our districts, so anything outside of basically the valley fringe falls within the wildland protection of the Department of Forestry or the Forest Service, and we do have a fireworks ban there. But we don't have the capacity to enforce that beyond what I think would happen if we completely banned them here. So I have spoken with Randy earlier today. I've looked at your alternatives, and I think there's, there's some options there that we would certainly support, but I would, at this point, urge you to consider the ramifications of an outright ban and what kind of threat that does to the rest of the county. Thank you.
And Chris, it looks like it's Chi or Cheen, followed by Roxanne Watson.
Thank you. It's Chris Cheek.
Cheek, okay.
Yeah. I just want to start by thanking you to listen to the few things that we have to say, specifically what I have to say today. When it comes to fireworks, safety is a big issue. And that's, I run a location in what's considered the Santa Clara District, which I've worked with Brian, and just the other day, he was showing me on his phone, he was saying, "See this house with a curb? That's part of Eugene, but this house, not even 50 feet away, that's Santa Clara." And he simply, my location where it's at is actually Santa Clara, it's not Eugene, but a lot of people think it's Eugene. And so the, I'm not really sure how all the laws and the regulations are adapted to that, but still, there's going to be a lot of people that are going to buy in Santa Clara and take it to Eugene. And I see that as a problem for enforcement, that you're going to have a lot of people that don't truly understand where the line is, because I'll ask people, "Where do you live?" And they're like, "Oh, I think I live here." And I said, "Well, I think that's Santa Clara. It may or may not be Eugene." And they're like, "Okay." But when people come and they ask me, "Where, where should we light these off?" We explain to them that safety is a big deal. Hey, do it on the pavement, that, you know, with enough range. And so it's not a matter of just taking it all away, but it's more of an education, and that's one of the things that we should do, is educate the consumer, not just take a whole, whole ban. For instance, when you look at it, the Fourth of July, Independence Day, is a nationally federal holiday, which, you know, the government employees get paid for that day to not work, but to what? Celebrate. Celebrate our freedom, celebrate and have a good time. So when you think about it, what's going to happen this weekend? You've got families that are going to get around the barbecue, they're going to get around a campfire, and associated with, with the Fourth of July is fireworks. And it's a great time to celebrate. It shouldn't be a time where they're upset and frustrated with the city of Eugene saying, "Well, they just took away all the fun." And so it's a day that we can educate the consumer and not just take it all away from them, but we could pass out the brochures, pass out the flyers, and continue. Because I know, year after year, I have customers that come in, and I educate them, and they, they come looking forward to it. And we can focus on the few calls or whatever that are incidents, but what about the hundreds of families that there was no incident? There was nothing wrong. They had a great time, they celebrated, and man, it was Independence Day, and they're thankful for that. Thank you.
Roxanne Watson is next, followed by Jonathan Farger.
Hi, I'm Roxanne Watson. I live at 1601 Olive Street, and we heard all the fire engines responding when Civic started burning. Still feel a great sense of loss. You know, I thought a lot about the ban on, on fireworks, and I've thought about how that doesn't relate to the sale of fireworks. There are places where you can go outside of the city limits and safely set off fireworks. One example would be the dam up Blue River. The community comes together up there, and that's where they do it, because there's lots of water and it's very safe. I think that it's really important to think about the potential loss of life and property. I mean, I think we're still all stinging from what just happened to Civic Stadium and the pain of all of that. So I think that there is a remedy. I would like to see for this year that it be banned within the city limits as a response to what happened at Civic. I don't know if fireworks were involved yet. I think that investigation is still undergoing, and we'll know the answer at some point. But I think that it's really prudent for us to say no this year. Perhaps not say it's going to be for all future years, but for this year, it seems to be the most prudent thing to do in light of what happened. And when I think about, you know, the residential infill up in the South Hills and how some of us place fireworks, even though we expect everyone to be responsible, it only takes one person out of 10 to cause a huge problem. That if there were something that happened up in the South Hills, the density, I mean, the roadways, just how thick that is with residential, I think it'd be a huge tragedy. So I would just like the city council to take all of that into consideration and make the best possible choice for our community.
Jonathan Farger is next, followed by Mark Rabinowitz.
Good afternoon. My name is Jonathan Farger. I currently reside in Springfield. I grew up in Eugene for most of my life. Having gone to North Eugene High School and Kelly Middle School, for the last few years I've lived out in Springfield. And the reason why, first of all, I want to say thank you for the opportunity to share with you guys just our heart and what's kind of happening with fireworks. You know, I am one of the sales representatives for Factory Fireworks Outlet, and I also go to Crossfire. I think one of the interesting things about the situation concerning fireworks is that the reality is still the illegals that are used, that are bought in other areas of the, of like Washington or other states and brought in. You see a lot of complaints from people that come in from out of state all the time and say, "Man, what you guys sell is not as cool as what I used to get when I lived in Alabama or, you know, Washington or..." You know, the reality is, I think the real issue is the illegals more than the safe ones that we sell locally. We do very diligent work to make sure that what we sell is safe, that it's used, it's, it's used in a safe way. And because of the illegally illegals that are used every year in our community, and the fact that we've, we've taken measures at us as a city to crack down on that, imposing fines and making sure that people are educated, I really think that's really where this is going to, we're going to benefit our community the most, is not banning them just because of people's misuse of fireworks or modification of fireworks that are safe already, but continuing to educate our community, the people, like I said, we make sure that we use our fireworks beforehand, knowing that what they do is safe. We don't sell unsafe product in our tent, and we make sure that whatever comes out of our tent is safe to use. And I think the reality also is, is that if we have a ban in Eugene on fireworks, we're going to see a lot of people purchase still in Eugene, go outside of Eugene, and there is, there is a much larger danger for them to use fireworks outside of Eugene in some of the areas that aren't as safe to use those types of fireworks that are safe and sane from our local vendors. So just want you guys to take in, to count that it really emphasis is the issue with people using illegals that always puts kind of this negative connotation on the local, the local vendors and what they sell that is safe. So, thank you.
You, last up, Mark Rabinowitz.
So I just want to express my thanks to the fire department for keeping South Eugene from burning down this week. I'm sure it was a tremendous effort, and thank you for risking your lives for the rest of us. This should have been banned weeks ago before the sale were underway, but it's where we're at. I'd like to point out, there's no liability bonds that are posted by the vendors of these devices in case they sell devices that cause a firestorm that caused major loss of life or major loss of property. A couple of years ago, on July 4th, there was a fire that was started by legal fireworks on Hillside Drive in South Eugene. Friends of mine across the street called the fire department. It was about the same weather conditions as today, although not as much drought. And if the fire had been about four blocks further to the south, it would have burned all the way up to the top of Spencer Butte and wiped out a couple square miles of city and county land. Wenatchee, Washington, just lost four square miles due to a firestorm. And the governor of Washington State has called for people not to use fireworks this year because they're in the same situation that we're in. Pyromania, I guess, is fun for some people, but for the rest of us, we face the risk with no benefit. If there's a firestorm, will the churches selling this material help contribute for the cost of the cleanup? I don't think so. Regulated use in rural Lane County includes no use of lawn mowers from 1:00 to 8:00 in the afternoon. I'd be surprised if 1% of the people even know that. I have a friend who almost got hit by a fire in California due to a lawnmower starting a fire a number of years ago. And burning metal is also carcinogenic. That's a separate issue. But if people really want to be concerned about fire, I have two options. One is ask people to hold them until New Year's, and then it'll be wet, hopefully, and people can blow things up to their hearts' content. The other is if you don't have a total ban, ask people to go to a place like Alton Baker Park, and they can blow up all their "Made in China" fireworks, and the fire department could be on staff, and you could have the foam trucks in case anything gets out of control. But the most impressive thing about the firestorm at, in South Eugene this week, was the speed of which the fire spread. And we are very fortunate that it happened in the daytime, when people were around, and it didn't spread into the surrounding neighborhood. And if there's fireworks that start fires on Sunday, Saturday, how fast is, how fast is the response really going to be?
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing and ask if there, the first thing we're going to do right now is ask if there, if any counselor has any questions for the purpose of clarification. Counselor Evans.
Yes, I note the three options that we have in front of us. Would we have possibly a fourth option where we would, for instance, ban fireworks throughout the city residential areas and have possibly designated locations where people can bring their fireworks and shoot them off, like parking lots in neighborhoods around, around the city, where it would be legal for them to take legal fireworks, shoot those off, and the rest of the, the community we would have a, a ban on? Is that, I know that that would be a little bit more complicated for us to, to, to work through, but I think maybe in the next three days, we could find some, you know, people with appropriate locations to do that so that it could be geographically balanced.
All right. Yes, that could be an option.
Okay.
Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the folks we had speaking was an official, and one of the things that he mentioned was about the increased danger to outlying areas from a ban inside the city that would push others out. So I can say that, I might, I'll get to my question in a second, but I'll say, I met the chief 15 years ago planning for the fireworks show that we took from the fairgrounds to the, to Alton Baker Park, and he and I worked to plan to make sure the trees didn't go up at that time when, when we lit fireworks in the park. And so I know from working with him how thoroughly the fire department plans for all potential scenarios of any kind of danger like this. And I know that one of the reasons College Hill is still standing is because of how much diligent planning and training your folks did to make sure that that fire at Civic Stadium was contained. So thank you, and to you and to your department for the hard work. My question, is it a greater fire danger to push a lot of folks outside the city to other areas, like the gentleman said, or to keep them inside a specific area in the city where you've trained more thoroughly about how to respond?
Obviously, that's a hypothetical question. It's hard to know exactly what the behaviors would be in response to a total ban. I do believe, with that said, I do believe that we are probably better equipped and deployed to handle such an emergency inside the city with our street network that gives us good transportation access. We have a water system that's built throughout the community, and we have a pretty good response time. Of course, as we get busier, you're getting companies from further away. So if that answers your question, it probably would be more dangerous to be pushing that outside the city.
Okay. That's what I was looking for. Thanks.
Any other questions? Counselors Zelenka, do you have any question?
Not at this time. I did want to, as the chief there, I just wanted to thank Ken and the rest of the fire department for all the hard work they did around Civic Stadium fire. By the time they got there, was probably fully engaged, so there wasn't much they could do, but I think they did an amazing job of containing it, and, and I think the community is a debt of gratitude.
Yes, I think we all feel that.
Thank you all for that. We have a very talented force, and I'm very proud of them.
Counselor Taylor.
Okay. I have a question also. And also, I want to say, I think you did an amazing job. It was really heroic. But my question is, if there were multiple fires at various locations, would you have the equipment and the person power to handle them if they were in many different locations?
Being the fire chief, I never think we have enough resources to handle everything because I always play things out to the worst possible scenario. That's what I think I get paid to do. We did have incidents going on concurrently with Civic Stadium. I mean, that's, we had routine calls happening throughout that incident and every incident we have. Again, that, there's a lot of variables involved in your questions. Certainly, we could be stripped to the point where we could not respond or could not adequately respond. However, we do a pretty good job of triaging calls as they come in, trying to divert to the higher priority incidents.
Yeah, I'm just thinking if there were in the South Hills, for example, fires going up the hills. I don't think you could surround it the same way you surrounded Civic Stadium. That's, that's my, I mean, it's a question, could you possibly surround them all in that same way and protect everything around?
Well, again, it depends how big the fire is, where exactly it's located, what our street access points are. There's a lot of variables to that question. For a wildland fire, a natural cover fire scenario, if we cannot directly attack and knock it down immediately, which is our, our first objective, we'll do a tactical maneuver called anchor and flank. We'll start on one side and try to turn it away from the most threatened areas.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't see anybody else with their hands. So now I'm going to ask if there's any additional comments from staff that we'd like to make?
Okay.
Okay. So then we'll go to you looking at, and you don't have to be constrained by these, but the options that, Glenn, you want to go through the options?
Sure. So there were three options, basic options presented to you, and certainly there can be variations. The first option would be you take no action, and then it would just be the same as it is today. The second option is a full fireworks ban, and what that really means is a full ban except for the permitted display. So there's nothing in the ordinance that's suggesting that the public displays, the 2030 Club, those sorts of things would be banned. They're not affected by this ordinance at all. The third option is a partial ban, which would be you choose some geographic area in the city, such as south of 18th and east of Aggett. That would deal with some of the concerns that have been raised about, well, you're going to shove everybody outside the city limits, and yet you would be dealing with, you would have a ban in the area that is of the most significant risk. So people would be able to set off fireworks inside the city. You could certainly have a different geographic area. As we were thinking about it, the most critical piece, if you're going to establish a geographic area, is to make it simple and to make it clear. If you have jogs here and there, people aren't going to know what's okay, what's not. The option, Greg, that you were talking about, we can The option, Greg, that you were talking about, we can certainly work that into the ordinance. If you wanted to do something like that, my recommendation is there would just be another exception from the ban for those areas designated by the city manager by administrative order, so that you're not trying to figure those out at the moment at this meeting. But if you choose a partial ban, then you probably don't need something like that because you would have said it continues to be legal to use fireworks anywhere north of 18th, for example. But that would certainly be another option that the council would have.
Okay. So now we're going to go around, do a round robin, and these options and any other options you want to discuss it. Staff just was trying to understand what your preferences are. So... And you can use this as a basis. The more precise you can be, the more helpful it is for them. So I'll start with Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. People's fears around this are very, very high. Our actual fire danger is two weeks ahead of schedule. I asked the chief previously for some information to find that there have been seven structure fires in the last 10 years. He cannot say that any of them were caused by legal fireworks. The one fire we know in the last two years was caused by illegal fireworks that we can't enforce or we're not enforcing as of these last few years. So the idea for me that we would ban all fireworks citywide, it seems just as wise to ban house fires because the nature of the capacity to enforce seems just as likely. But I want to let common sense and a common sense idea rule the day here and address the things that people are genuinely concerned about. And almost all of the things that we see in the way of concerns are coming from the South Hills. So as a way of meeting in the middle and/or trying to formulate a common sense solution, I would be willing to ban south of 18th and east of Aggett. But I would feel strained to acquiesce to unanimous consent if I thought the majority were in favor of banning entirely. That's... I would say, too, that we have a number of house fires every year from people smoking in their house, dozens. We have house fires every year from people who leave pillows lying against the radiator and against the wall heater. We have many, many more fires from other causes, and we don't work to ban those. And the harm here in banning, even though it may help us not feel as afraid, we, A, won't be able to enforce it, and B, there are much greater actual dangers that take place in the community. So I want to address people's fear. I want to put them at ease to a degree. I want to try and do the common sense thing, but I think a citywide ban is too extreme.
Counselor Pryor.
Thank you. This is an interesting one because, for me, I am committed to doing something rather than talking. And I worry that if you pass a full ban without the weight of enforcement behind it, then it's like the cellphone law. How well has that worked? Or any other law that you can pass that you have no teeth to enforce behind it. So for me, whether we ban or don't ban legal fireworks is not as important as what are we going to do to ensure that legal or illegal, or primarily illegal, we have some teeth to catch, cite, and find the people that are using illegal fireworks. That is the real problem that we have. And so far, we've not really... We've made some strides, but we've really not effectively addressed what, to me, is the real problem around fire, and that is illegal fireworks. And so I don't think that a full ban of fireworks is necessarily going to really address the problem that, in reality, we're dealing with, which, to me, is illegal fireworks, for the structure fires, for the enforcement, for everything else. So I do think, though, that there is a very real danger of dry weather right now. And so a partial ban, which would cover the areas of greatest fire danger, would be something that I could see myself supporting. But I don't want to support anything that doesn't have teeth behind it. So I really appreciate the fact that you've talked about adding $10,000 more dollars for enforcement. I would say that whatever it is we do today, this council has to commit itself to saying we're going to put the resources, whether it's financial, human, or other, behind enforcement so that we can make sure that during this Fourth of July season, irresponsible, stupid people doing irresponsible and stupid things will have a consequence. Because we can pass all the bans we want to, and somebody will say, fine, I still talk on my cellphone, there's a cellphone law, so I'll still shoot off my fireworks because that's what I want to do. We have got to have an enforcement element. So we can do some sort of a partial ban, which is what I would be inclined to do. But to me, it's going to be a gesture unless there is real enforcement behind it. So I would be very interested in knowing what we plan to do to ensure that illegal fireworks are addressed this year and as effectively as possible. And I know that's putting an enormous burden on you, but I'm actually saying we need to be able to commit ourselves to say, whatever resources you need to do this, and whatever resources Chief Kearns needs to do this, we need to put it there. Because otherwise, we're doing something that feels good, but it's not really going to solve the problem.
So I know that you've done some thinking about this even before this came up and have some plans for how to elevate our enforcement and then additional here. So maybe a good time now for you to discuss that.
Yeah, maybe Pete, I'd ask you to come and talk a little bit about that.
We've followed the program that we applied last year in order to comply with the city council's wishes in reducing the use of illegal fireworks. So we'll be... We already have plans for that, and we have public relations messages that we've shared and that we've developed together with the fire department, and so we'll continue with that. We have about $20,000 committed to that program, and with something... With another $10,000, we can staff more officers. The approach, based on last year's conversation with council, was to reduce the usage of fireworks, not necessarily to reduce the likelihood of fire. And so we've got maps that you've seen and the material that we've sent to you that shows the concentrations of where fireworks are most often reported, and that's in... That's in the... One area is off of Cobra Road near Willackinsy, the other area is out near Bethel. So we would shift our strategy to focus on the... We'd use the same resources, we'd enhance it a little bit, and we'd shift our focus on South Hills.
Anything you want to add to that?
Yes. Mayor, council, fire will have everything staffed and rolling on that night so that we're out making a presence. We do not... Our line companies do not have enforcement capability. Plus, I don't think you want untrained, unarmed people confronting folks after they've consumed alcohol and dealing with those issues. But we will have a presence. We will have a communication capability back to dispatch that has access to the police. If we're going to slant one part of town with a little heavier patrol from a fire perspective, it will be the South Hills, just so that we can more quickly jump on a problem that occurs. I have seen some positive effect, going back to my days when I still got to ride in the big red things, where we'd drive through a neighborhood and it'd kind of settle back down. The trouble is, it starts back up as soon as we're down the street. But at least we're in people's minds that, yes, there is potential problems if they continue with the behavior.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I think a partial ban is the way to go. That's the one I'm going to support. I think we really need to focus on, you know, the South Hills, southwest hills. I like the boundaries. That's where the most concentration of dry fuel is. The trees are more dense in those areas. The hills make access to put a fire out more difficult. The understory, there's, you know, lots of brush underneath, and that's tinder, that's fuel, it's ready to go. All it takes is a bad firework to set the whole thing off. If it's windy, it'd probably be windy that day. That just feeds it even more, like at the Civic Stadium fire. It was unbelievable how quickly it went. There was a nice north wind blowing just to feed this wall of orange flame. I would... You know, we're so close to the fourth that I would prefer a little more nuanced boundary area, but I kind of agree with the city attorney if, you know, if we try to have a map, it's like it zigzags around, like it would... No one's going to understand that. It would be ineffective. I like these boundaries. You know, families that live south of 18th are just going to have to buddy up with their friends, like their kids, you know, can call their school chums and say, well, hey, why don't we come over to your driveway or your street and set off. I like Counselor Evans' idea of big parking lots scattered around town. I mean, we ought to think about that in the future. We can't figure everything out today. But we're going to have other dry seasons. It's becoming a pattern with global warming, and, you know, we may reach a year where we just go, no, I'm sorry, we can't do this anymore. But there may be a time in the future, or like next year, say, if this happens, maybe we would have a plan of still have the ones in the stadiums, but also big parking lots where little kids could go and set off their stuff, you know? And we can't figure all that out right now, maybe. But so I will support the partial ban. I like that. I think that people will go out in the country, a certain number of people will go find a place, well, hey, I know a dead-end road out there, and it's like, you know, I think we're really asking for trouble if people start doing that. And do out all this... We know that the illegal fireworks are still going to be there. That's going to be the biggest danger, no matter what we do, so we have to keep that in the back of our mind, too. Thanks.
Thank you. George Poling.
Thank you. Yeah, I also will support a partial ban. I think a full ban will cause many unintended consequences, some that were brought up here, some we don't even know about yet. And also, a full ban will actually, in my opinion, will be punishing the people that are going to use good common sense and follow the safety rules and are conscientious about the way they do set off their legal fireworks. I do, however, know how difficult it is to enforce some of these laws, especially around the illegal fireworks. And I was just wondering, the $10,000 that you're talking about, the contingency fund, is that being primarily used in the area of the partial ban? Is that the way... Or if it was a full ban, is that what we're going to do with it?
You know, given the concern that brought this to our attention, we'd use most of it to focus on the area where there's the greatest fire risk.
I'm sorry?
Where there's the greatest fire risk.
Okay. Well, since you're here, Chief, I've got two more questions that you might be able to answer. Is there any way that we can make it easier to prosecute people who violate the illegal fireworks laws? Or are we pretty well locked in by state law on the way we enforce our ordinance on that?
We're locked in by the state law, yes.
And is it the same thing with as far as fines? Is there a way to possibly, say, double the fines during the fire season, or is that also...
I think the presiding judge would have to do that, make that decision.
Okay. Well, you know, I... If the funds were available, I would not be... Not effective doubling that $10,000 to $20,000 to get more people out on the street, especially in the Willackinsy area. You know, we've got particularly two places within less than a mile of where I live where they've already started. One guy already started probably, well, the beginning of the week with illegal fireworks. So I'm glad we're spending some extra money because that is what's going to address the issue, is getting people out there to enforce the laws. You know, and George kind of answered part of the question. My question that I had was, why did we choose Aggett and not, say, Willamette, east of Willamette or east of Chambers, where we still have some hilly areas south of 18th?
This is a coordinates we've used in the past during similar conditions where we've picked those. We're trying to encompass as many of the hilly areas as possible. This obviously doesn't get at Willigalesby Butte, but if you hit... If you look at the South Hill ridge line, it goes... It's on an east-west axis, and then when you pass Aggett, actually a little further than Aggett even, it starts wrapping around back down to Franklin Boulevard. And then I-5, you have a natural break there, and then the ridge line picks up again into Springfield.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Counselor Zelenka.
I think we lost that one.
Yeah, I had to get myself off mute. Yeah, I think there's a balancing act between common sense and fairness, and right now, I think we're too close to the Fourth of July to do an outright ban. People already bought their fireworks, that's not really fair. There's fundraisers that still have things going on. We didn't... If we were going to do a ban, that kind of... That horse slapped the barn a long time ago. We should have done it a while ago. If we're going to do it in the future, we need time for people to transition their final alternatives to what they've been doing today. I understand there's a risk of fire in the South Hills, and the partial ban makes sense to me. An outright ban, I think, would just push people out into other areas and make it potentially more dangerous. And as Georgia Brown said, they're still going to be using the illegal fireworks regardless of what we do. And so I would be in favor of a partial ban, and the staff has done the geography, and also work with the sellers on a communication plan. I like the flyers idea or communications with the sale that is going to happen in the next couple of days, that we have a public communications effort, talk about the dangers, and use Civic as an example of what can happen. And then also, I like the idea of maybe the city can help designate places that are safe for the... To do fireworks for folks that are in the banned areas and direct them there. If we did all of that, I think that would be a balancing of risk and common sense and fairness.
Thank you. Counselor Soret, are you on the phone?
Yes, Mayor, I'm here.
You have any comments you want to make?
Yeah. So I appreciate all the comments and the work of our firefighters and EPD to deal with the illegal fireworks that are really the big safety concern. I also appreciate that people have put money on their legal fireworks and that we've really kind of waited till the last minute to discuss this ban, but, you know, there has always been a chance that we might ban fireworks, especially given the extremely dry and hot weather that doesn't appear to be ready to break anytime soon. And I will say that the pleas from fundraising groups last year did make a difference in our deliberations, and as a result, we didn't implement a complete ban last year, but instead limited the days of allowed use. Yeah, I just wanted to share, I grew up in a city in Southern California that banned fireworks in the 1970s after a catastrophic fire started by legal fireworks. And that city was not any kind of liberal enclave. And as a community, we continue to enjoy large professional fireworks display without the fear of another terrible fire. And it's amazing how quickly kids can be distracted from their disappointment with a little bit of creative diversion. So on balance, you know, I would support a full or a partial ban. I would like to establish some safe zones where a community can gather, you know, large asphalt parking lots, as Counselor Evans was speaking to when I had to leave the meeting to get in my car. So, you know, if the majority is thinking of a partial ban, it's just part of the city, I would support that, but I would also be willing to go further and implement a full ban and then ask the city manager and fire chiefs to designate community locations where families could gather to set off their individual purchase fireworks.
Thank you. Counselor Taylor.
Thank you. I feel stunned by this, really. I think people are not going to believe it if we don't institute a ban, the people, considering the conditions. Of course, I have asked every year, almost every year after the Fourth of July, for us to think about a ban for the... Considering that people could plan ahead. But this is... And it hasn't worked so far, but this is an extreme situation, the extreme dryness. I think that any... Even lighting a match outside is dangerous. Legal fireworks, if... They require fire, that's why they're called fireworks. And things are so dry that just a match... And things are so dry that just a match can start a fire which can spread quickly, with everything being, and not everyone is even watering their lawns right now, because it's too expensive. If we had a partial ban, it would be fine with me personally, because that's where I live. So, but I don't think it's, I think there are, that all over the city, it's very dry. The big fire that happened last year, or the year before, wasn't in South Eugene, and it was from fireworks. I think we would have some very unhappy people out on River Road and out in North Eugene if we say, if we don't protect them from the danger of fire and from the other nuisances of fireworks. I think, sure, it's too bad people already spent money, but in an emergency situation to protect for the public safety, they may have to lose that money. It's better than losing. I would not like us to wake up on the Fifth and find that a huge portion of the city has burned, and I think that could happen easily this year. So I do favor a complete ban, and I hope we will do that.
Counselor Evans?
Thanks, Mayor. I'm with some of the other colleagues around the table. I think a partial ban at this time makes more sense than a complete ban. I don't think that we're going to be able to really get the community to wrap their heads around that, and I don't think that it's, you know, enforceable in a realistic sense. I think that my proposal for us to have designated areas where people can take legal fireworks, you know, take them off the street, and get them in an area where, you know, a number of people can legally set them off, various areas around the city, there may be three, maybe four, you know, specific areas where people can take their fireworks and light them and set them off, would be a lot more palatable to folks, and also encourage people to eventually migrate to that type of activity, and get them off of the streets in the residential areas where you have the most danger for having a fire started. I have a number of people in my ward that have emailed me and want to see some sort of ban, but like I said, I think that what we need to do is, we've got three days to figure this out, and to do something that is more realistic and enforceable would be my way to go. And so I'm going to support a partial ban, but I would like to add the caveat to that, that we have staff look at specific locations for people to set off legal fireworks, where we can have families who have already bought fireworks to set them off in their streets and everything else, like they do on my street, because everybody's doing it on streets variety throughout the city, that that would be a way to go at this time, and then we, as a council, can come back and revisit this after the Fourth, so that we can have a more thought-out and robust policy around fireworks that makes sense for everybody.
Counselor Taylor?
Thank you. I think that for the future, designated areas are a good idea, and they could be patrolled or controlled, perhaps. I think we should have a thorough discussion sometime after the holiday, but for now, I still think that we should react to extreme conditions with extreme measures.
So I'm just going to say what I heard, and what I heard in this roundtable was, the vast majority of counselors are supportive of a partial ban, and there was some appreciation for the work that the sellers are doing to educate people, and there is a, in the short term, there is interest in, within the banned area for some safe places, for people to be able to do fireworks, and in the future, to look at it in a broader way. That's what I heard.
And the last part in the clarification, I just want to make sure, on a partial ban, of course, anybody north of 18th?
Ken?
The legal fireworks aren't banned, so they can use those as they currently do. So are you saying that within the south of 18th to designate a couple of spots for legal fireworks? Is that what you're wanting to do?
Well, what I'm saying is, is I would say yes to the latter, but also to the former, that throughout the city, the entire city, that we have specific designated areas where illegal fireworks can be shut off. I think part of the problem is, is that we do have legal fireworks that possibly could contribute to fire conditions, you know, if they're improperly used, you know, on the streets that they're being used on, and that we give people an opportunity to legally, you know, have a place where they can gather and shoot them off, and start migrating them behaviorally out of the residential areas and into safe zones where they can shoot them off.
But north of 18th, we'd be encouraging, they wouldn't be required to go there?
Right.
But we would say, here's a couple places you might consider.
Precisely, yeah. These would be places that you would consider taking your family to shoot off fireworks in a more safe environment.
But they're not required.
We're not requiring that, but that the city, you know, set up with various people, you know, the parking lot owners or whatever, the ability for that to happen.
Okay, got it.
I think that the difficulty, as it was being expressed, with talking about it being legal, when the ones you're talking about are already legal.
Right.
So that, you're not changing the legality, you're just encouraging them to take it to a specific location.
Exactly.
Right. So that isn't necessarily in the ordinance, but we could do that as part of an education case.
But we can do that administratively, and that's what I'm trying to suggest. That may not be part of the ordinance specifically, but administratively, we can create these zones, advertise them to people, and so that they can take their families and shoot off fireworks in a more, you know, controlled environment.
But in the short term, we've got, we're on a very short timeframe to do anything, so it should be focused.
So what we would, we would really, if you want to designate places in the south, which, again, that may be one of those, if you want to, I would suggest, we'll focus our energies on there, rather than finding places in the north, particularly for this year. In future years, we would want to pursue that, but it feels like there is limited time to try to focus pretty quickly into something.
So now, Glenn, motion?
Yes, so first, Mayor, you should ask-
To ask if anybody objects to dealing with this now?
And Mayor, my suggestion is, since you are talking about the South Hills, version of the ordinance, is just to ask whether any counselor objects to proceeding to action on the South Hills version of this ordinance. And what you have in front of you, in case you haven't realized it, is two sides. One side at the upper right says "full ban," the other side says "South Hills ban." And so if the mayor qualifies the request, then you all know you're only proceeding on the South Hills version.
Right. So that's what we're proceeding on, unless anybody object, are you dealing with that today?
No objection, so defined.
Okay. So I don't think there's any objection. So then I will need Counselor Evans to put the motion forward.
So, let me see, which one of these are we?
South Hills.
Is it, oh, flip side, okay.
I'll show you the motion.
Show me the motion, yeah.
So, the motion would be, I move to adopt the South Hills version.
Got you. Okay. All right. So I move to adopt the South Hills version of Council Bill 5147, an ordinance prohibiting the use of fireworks.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Okay, so now I need to clarify, if you want the city manager to be able to designate areas south of 18th, then I need to give you an amendment to this. If the manager would only be designating areas, in essence, recommended areas, because everything's legal north of 18th, to designate recommended areas just north of 18th, I don't need to give you an amendment. But if you want him to designate areas south of 18th, I need to give you an amendment to the ordinance, and I'm not clear as to what you really want to do.
I would personally recommend trying to keep this as simple as possible.
Yes, Counselor?
I think this year, and given the really short timeframe here, I think I agree with that, and not, it's a great idea, but I think it might be hard. The only place I can think of would be Amazon Park, maybe, or, I mean, there's Arts and Technology, or something like that, and maybe a private parking lot, like the Safeway at Donald. I think it's, we're a little too crammed in here to do that this year. It's an outstanding idea, and I think we ought to definitely have that for next year.
Yeah, I concur with that, so just keep it clean.
So you've made the motion, there's been a second, so now it's just discussion and a vote. Six of you need to vote yes in order for this to take effect before the Fourth.
Okay, so I'm now calling all those in favor, please indicate, one, two, three, four, five, six.
The motion is on your left.
Counselor Zelenka?
Aye, yes.
Seven. Counselor Saret?
I vote yes.
Eight. Eight in favor, none in opposition, it passes, and we have finished.
No, no, we have one more motion, on the money.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, yeah. Okay. I move that-
GPS.
Yes.
GPS.
Was GPS voting, there?
I don't know. I move that council approve the use of up to $10,000 of council contingency for additional enforcement efforts related to unlawful use of fireworks.
Moved, seconded. And seconded. See no discussion, all those in favor, please indicate, one, two, three, four, five, six, here, Counselor Zelenka?
Yes.
Counselor Saret?
I vote yes.
Eight in favor, none in opposition, it passes. Thank you all very much for coming today, for the good work, thank you.